So it is now six o'clock. I'd like to bring the Plington School Committee to order and acknowledge that we are being filmed this evening by Area 58. Allison would like to welcome everybody back to school and hope that you're all having a great start to your school year. Appreciate everything you've done to get the school ready, to get your classrooms ready for the students of the Denne, to give them the best opportunity possible to make the most growth during the school year as they can. So thank you all. At this time, is there anybody from the public who would like to speak to the committee? Okay, seeing none. At this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn to our executive session under MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21a3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for contract negotiations, the Plington Teachers Association, and to discuss teacher LOA and executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21a7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law for the approval of our executive session minutes from July 14, 2025, and to then return to open session.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
I have a second. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we'll do a roll call just to make sure. I'm sorry, we're going into executive. Brian?
Hi.
John?
Yes.
And I'm yes as well. Okay. We will be back after our executive session. We'll try and make it as quick as possible. Thank you. You ready to rock and roll?
We're ready.
All right. Everybody ready? Okay, we're back into regular session from executive at 6:14, and we're moving on to Plington Teachers Contract Discussion and Vote. John, Rob, if you want to cover any highlights from the negotiations?
Yeah, so we'll keep it pretty simple. We did negotiate a new contract with the Teachers Association. It's a three-year contract. We agreed on cost of living increases of 3% per year over the three years. And we also made some language changes to the contract, largely at the request of the Plington Teachers Association. So that's all I really have for that. But I would make a motion, if you're ready to entertain it, for the committee to approve and ratify the contract that is before us with the Teachers Association for the next three years.
Thank you. Do I have a second to that?
Second.
All right, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you very much to the negotiation team and to the teachers for working collaboratively to come to this end means, so we can keep doing the business of educating the kids of Plington at the Denne. Moving on to the approval of minutes from July 14, 2025. Did anybody have any changes they needed to make to the minutes? I personally didn't see any.
I'll move the minutes to be approved as submitted.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, on to school committee correspondence. I did receive correspondence about a discussion that the Select Board is having about our SRO here at the Denne. I'm not exactly understanding what questions are being asked and what the angle is at this point. I want to remind the public and the committee that we did have a follow-up discussion about the SRO position here at the Denne at our July meeting, and we did express our continued interest and support for the SRO program. Does anybody have any questions, things to add to this discussion?
We voted in favor of a town meeting to continue the SRO, correct?
Right. So the SRO that we have here at the Denne did not come directly from the school committee. Actually, it came from parents who reached out to the school committee. They showed up in force. They asked us about our safety protocols. They were very impressed with what we had, but wanted more. They wanted a full-time school resource officer dedicated to the students of Denne to be here from bus time until after-school time. The Select Board and the Chief of Police actually came together to put a warrant forward for a town meeting, and it was voted at town meeting. I think it was unanimous. If it wasn't, it was one or two dissents. And we supported that vote at town meeting. So that's the origin story of how an SRO came to be here at the Denne.
So based on the correspondence that we received, Jason and I did put together a letter which we sent to the Selectmen this morning, since neither of us could make a midday meeting, the Board of Selectmen. And I can just read it. So this is... So we said, you know, basically, "It is our understanding that the Board of Selectmen plans to discuss the school resource officer program today's Selectmen's meeting. One of us would have been happy to attend to provide input from the Plington School Committee. However, we're unable to do so given the timing of the meeting. We appreciate the opportunity to offer our thoughts. This item was discussed at the July Plington School Committee meeting, and the committee remains in full support of the program in its current formation with SRO Tim Johnson, especially after the successful implementation of the LEED program. We also appreciate that Chief Hall joined our October 2024 meeting to provide his vision for the program going forward with Officer Johnson. His vision is aligned with the committees. The program was developed after requests from Denne parents in early part of 2023. The committee was grateful for the chief and the town's support of the program leading up to and at town meeting that year. We believe that the LEED program and Officer Johnson are a good addition to the Denne community curriculum and community." And I did also offer, if the Selectmen wanted to discuss it more, they could come tonight. If they didn't, so that's fine. I did get an update from the police chief this afternoon. He said the meeting was a good meeting, and they kind of ran through sort of the plans and answered any questions that either the Selectmen had or members of the audience had regarding the program. So it seems like it was more of an update than anything else. And I mean, we hope so because I think, you know, it was a good addition and we liked what happened last year. And I know it got started a little bit late, but it looks like they finished strong, so...
Correct.
Yeah.
What was the nature of the inquiry?
Again, it was rather vague to me. I just knew it was on the agenda for the Selectmen. So John and I composed that simple note, since we can't make it to Selectmen meetings that are at 12:30 in the afternoon. I understand it works for the Selectmen. And I would hope that if they continue to have a discussion about this and if they are going to make any suggestions for change, that they have an honest and open conversation with us first before they make any moves unilateral on their own.
Because it's funded through the town.
It's funded through the town, not the school.
Correct. It's the police department budget. But I know that both Chief Hall and Sergeant Valente, who's sort of the overseer of the program, you know, are very much in support of this, and I think we've finally got a good mix. The great challenge with the program and the sort of fits and starts is trying to take patrol officer and drop them from a four-day-on-three-day-off schedule and drop them into a building from, you know, eight to three. It's just not... It's not really in everyone's DNA to do that. And it also then precludes a lot of the ability for being able to do details and things that provide additional income. So that's a challenge. But I think we've got a good fit now and look forward to that continuing to build, not only with LEED, but other ways and more incorporation in the school community.
So if nothing further comes of it, we'll let it lie. But if it continues to be a discussion, hopefully we'll be involved. That's the expectation.
And I can provide a copy of the email we can add to the minutes.
Would there be any further correspondence? Peter? Jill? No? Okay, great. So moving on to new business, a consent agenda, discussion of possible vote. I put this on the agenda to get your feel for where you all are with the consent agenda. I actually think it's quite a brilliant move. It's handled very similarly to non-contentious items at a town meeting, where unless somebody asks for a hold on a certain item, you can actually vote a series of the everyday business of the committee with one fell swoop vote. So I wanted to know how you all felt about it before we moved to that. I know the other committees have already adopted the consent agenda at Halifax, Kingston, and for Silver Lake.
I think the Selectmen have been using the consent agenda for a couple of years now.
Well, Karen brought it forth to the school committees of Silver Lake and Union 31 because she's a member of the message board for MASCE that is set up for the executive secretaries of school committees. So yes, it's a past practice. It's accepted by Robert's Rules, parliamentary procedure. But again, I just, I didn't want to make the unilateral decision without making sure that everyone on the committee was comfortable with it. So I prefer a vote to move to that than me just deciding for us.
Yeah, I think we just need to make sure the template fully reflects our existing agenda for some of the committees and things like that, but I think it's fine.
Yeah, Karen put in our folders an example of how it could be used by us specifically, and I think it makes a lot of sense.
Yep. I looked at it. So I'm happy to make a motion that we move forward with using your consent agenda, you know, starting with our October meeting.
Okay. Do I have a second?
If we vote on it, does that mean we have to use it going forward all the time?
Flash. We would be using it going forward unless we chose to vote to go back.
To go back. If we don't vote and just leave it up to you, can we go back and forth as we want?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Yeah, but the mechanics of it are, is that if something is within the consent part
of the agenda, you can put a hold on it, basically, and it just drops right out. So, you know, you always have the opportunity, if we want to talk about something that's in that part, to just pull it out.
All right. I was just to make sure our vote was prudent and limits our flexibility should we do that.
Understood.
Okay.
All right. So we have a second. You good? Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. Awesome. So moving on to new business, Part B. Dan has left the school committee after many years of service, during some very difficult years of being on school committee. He will be sorely missed, but Dan didn't just step away from public service here in Plington. Dan recently got appointed to the Finance Committee. And under mass general laws, the Finance Committee is the only committee that you cannot be on any other committees at the same time, because there'd be a conflict when we presented our budget to his other committee. So Dan has stepped down. We'll have a familiar face on the FinCon, and we go to speak to them about our budget moving forward. But I did talk with the Selectmen about how they would like us to move forward, because when you have a resignation on a board, it becomes a joint appointment of the school committee and the Select Board. So what I'm going to propose to us this evening is that we have interviews at our October 27 meeting at 5:00, if you can make it. If we can't, we can reschedule and look at something. But I would like as many of us to be here as possible to interview individuals who would like to fulfill the rest of this year's term, so they would have to go until May at town meeting and town elections. I believe Dan may have had another year on his term, so it would be up to that individual if they then would like to run for the remainder of Dan's term. So it only runs from now until town elections, and then they would have to run for that open seat, which would be just one more year, I believe, and then they would have to run potentially again for a three-year term. So we're looking for candidates for school committee. We would be doing those interviews at our next school committee meeting, which is on October 27. This committee then would make a recommendation to the Select Board of who our candidate of choice would be, and then the Select Board would make a final vote to approve our appointee or to reject our appointee. I've never seen a Select Board reject the school committee's appointee in all my years doing this, but that's our charge. Do you guys have any questions or suggestions about how we should run this?
That's fine, and that earlier time should be fine, from my perspective.
Do candidates know how to apply?
So candidates, I would suggest they reach out to me. Jason Fraser is the chair of the school committee, and my email address is on the school's webpage and on Silver Lake Regional Schools webpage. If you click over to the school committee tabs, you'll find my email address, and that's the best way to contact me, to schedule when your interview would be before this committee. I'm also happy to answer any questions if you're interested and not quite sure, and be happy to meet with any of the candidates as well to just discuss the position and some of the responsibilities as well, so you come into this eyes wide open.
Do you think we could get this publicized in the paper?
I would definitely reach out to the newspaper and make sure they know, and I will also reach back to the Selectmen to let them know what our timeline and procedures are, so they can line up when they would take their vote as well, so we can have a full committee as soon as possible, especially as we head into our beloved budget season. Any further questions, comments, concerns, pieces of advice? All right. Perfect. Are you Becky?
I am.
Becky, you have uncanny timing.
Oh, wow. I love that.
So we don't have to move your agenda item around at all?
Wonderful.
Perfect timing. So Becky reached out to me. She's part of the Town Recreation Department, but she's also part of PACE.
Yes.
And we have two different topics really we want to discuss tonight. So if you could take them one at a time, so we know which hat you're wearing, then we can address those two issues. So thank you for joining us.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for waiting. Sorry I'm late.
No, no, you didn't make us wait. Literally perfect timing.
Perfect. So first, we were trying to see if we can put, as part of Recreation Committee, some more signs posting the fact that there's no dogs allowed. Right now, there's currently just one as you're coming in the driveway, but then there's also another sign that's very faded. I don't know if anyone's realized it, but it says, you know, "Please pick up after your dog." So it's just very confusing for people, and we're noticing more and more dogs, and people from our own town are doing it. So then, as we have sports here, everyone else is bringing their dogs also. So we're just asking for permission to put up a few more signs, potentially probably one in front of the softball field, one on the snack shack, and then maybe another one down by the soccer fields if possible.
So that's a formal request from the REC department?
Yes.
So would anybody from the committee like to explain the process we've gone through with the dogs on the fields and the issues and the signage?
Not really. I mean, good luck. I think it's... I have no personal problem with putting more signage up. It just seems that people don't want to read those signs.
Oh, I don't disagree with you. We're having that...
I mean, it just, it's... And it got really bad after COVID, and it's just kept going because of it. You know, and I've been up here, you know, when the donation bin was used to be up here, you'd pull up and people just open the hatch of the SUV and the dogs go bounding out. And I get that. I mean, it's, you know, it would be great to have a dog park where you could have a good free roam, and we just don't have that right now. So I mean, if the REC committee thinks it would help, then I personally am fully supportive of trying again.
I mean, I don't know that it will help, but I do think that if we're not posting it prominently enough...
Yeah, I mean, it certainly, if one of the signs you can barely read and the other one is off to the side, then if there's a better place to put the signage, then at least that may help with... If it helps with a couple of dogs, it's at least a couple that aren't on the field. So, yeah. It was... The joke of this is this was a long-running agenda item that didn't get us anywhere very fast, so...
Yes, and it even got pushback from many members of the town as well, because the good dog owners felt like they were being punished for a few dog owners who were not being as responsible with their pet. But it comes down to the fact that those fields are supposed to be for the kids of Plington and the adults of Plington for recreation, not for the dogs of Plington. And not only is it just disgusting and gross, it also leads to some health concerns, tracking it back into buildings, homes, houses.
And we did so. We did a decent amount of... I mean, it wasn't an academic research project, but we did, you know, look around at other towns, and we could not find other towns where the athletic fields allowed dogs. It's just, it's a pretty standard thing to just say, "Not allowed."
Okay. Is there anybody against the REC committee putting up extra signs about the dogs on the fields?
Put all the signs up.
Does... Do you have any sightline issues where you want, or is it far enough away it's not going to cause any issues that you need to weigh in?
I don't see a problem with it at all.
Okay.
All right. I'll make a motion that we grant the REC committee's request to put up additional signage regarding our furry friends.
Do I have a second? Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. We actually appreciate it.
Thank you. So I guess my second is from part of the PACE board as well. And so something else came up that I'm just going to mention briefly. PACE does have an AED machine that we are looking at putting up on the snack shack, and I had mentioned to them that maybe while I'm here tonight, I should just kind of verify that that is okay with you. I do have a picture of it. You know, we have done training through PACE for that, and the fire department was the one that, where we got it from the fire department. So it's like a metal, you know, fold.
Yeah, I would just suggest that you continue working with the fire department on the placement and their awareness that it's there, and they can give you any of the protocols that need to go along with its installation.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that that was okay with you.
Does anybody have any concerns about that being up there?
The snack shack?
It's going to be posted... Yeah, it's going to be put up around the snack shack.
Is there electricity going to the snack shack?
Um, yeah, I believe there's...
There's a refrigerator there.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, there's a refrigerator. I don't know if it was off. I know there's a bunch of extension cords around there.
Uh...
I don't know if it's off.
I shouldn't speak with authority. I don't know, but there is some form of electricity inside the snack shack.
Because you can't have an AED machine off of an extension cord.
No, I believe there's electricity in the snack shack, but I will verify that, because Kristen was the one that told me to... That's she... That was her plan, was to put it on there, so... And she's been working with the fire department on it, and they know where it's supposed to go, so...
Fantastic.
I'm comfortable as long as they continue working with the chief.
It's constantly charging.
You agree? Don't think it requires our vote, or do you want to just make a claim?
As well, since it's going on...
Okay, go ahead, John.
It's a move that we support, the addition of an AED machine on the snack shack pursuant to the fire department's approval.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We're good on that?
My last order of business, I apologize. I know that there was discussion at one point, but PACE is a lot of fundraising. We've also had a few championships. We would like the ability to put up banners around the softball field. I don't know, I was not part of PACE, or at least part of the board, when this was previously discussed. I think it was more that they put them up there and never actually asked for permission, so I'm asking formally for permission. We have had a couple of championship teams. We had two soccer teams last year. We had a soccer team a few years ago and a softball team. So we'd like to put up a banner to, you know, commemorate that, and then also so that we can do some fundraising to help support the fields as well, so it's not coming out of, you know, just the REC budget and the taxpayers' budget, so...
Those right there, I think are two separate items.
Okay.
Putting up championship banners to celebrate the kids of PACE around the field, I don't think is an issue. I think where the issue really was, was putting up advertisement banners around the fence, and that was actually the Board of Selectmen who ordered it to it.
It was an issue that it started as a REC committee item to have the advertising banners, which was approved, and a separate account was set up so that REC could do it. And then it, over time, kind of melted with PACE, and all of a sudden, it was PACE that was putting those up, which I believe that's been re-strickened out, and REC is doing it. Isn't REC doing the banners?
REC hasn't been doing any banners, no. The banners that are up at Hold are done through PACE.
Okay.
So REC doesn't have a problem with the banners.
Yeah.
We just, I didn't... Like I said, what I was told was that PACE put them up and that, you know, it was...
Yeah, there was some...
I know there was some discussion.
...miscommunication, and at the time, it was the Selectmen had said, "Well, let's sort it out," and it was sort of some hands were thrown in the air, and it just kind of disappeared. And so it wasn't that you couldn't do it, it was the mechanism of how everything was set up that was not quite right, which we're trying to get, which they were trying to get fixed. So I mean, I think anything that we can, you know, as long as things are maintained and, you know, kept in good order, I think anything that we can do to, one, either honor sort of the great rebirth of our athletics here in town, or two, to help fundraise for that, I don't have a particular problem. We use the fences out there.
Perfect.
Anybody else? I'm just wondering whether or not the advertisements that are up there would have to fall under school committee policies because it is school grounds. And those are rather restrictive compared to the town policies.
Well, I mean, it's, it is, it is school grounds, but, you know, but it's town property.
Depends on how the policy's written. We have to look at the exact...
So let's look at the exact wording, because I would like to make... I'd like to find a way that it's not a problem, because, you know, PACE does... Does PACE or the REC committee pay to water and...
The REC committee does. PACE does help with some of that when we need additional funds.
Yeah. So, you know, I think it's... So let's look at that. And if there's, if we have any issues with it, maybe we have to look at whether one entity or another entity needs to do it, if it makes it easier.
Putting up the library or whatever.
Right.
So it's advertising in the schools, so services in school buildings or on school property. Under guidelines or regulations, it may approve. Otherwise, no advertising of commercial products or services will be permitted in school buildings or on school property. Publications of the school system will not contain any advertising.
On school property.
That was my concern, is knowing the school policy as it's written.
But...
Can we change the school policy?
No, I mean, it's...
Yeah, but you have to go through subcommittee and then through, and then each of the school districts, and then you're, then you're looking at advertising.
What do you do at Silver Lake? Aren't we going to put a screen up there?
So it, we don't have advertising currently at Silver Lake, and we have to be very careful about even just what the announcers are saying in the booth that goes.
Yeah. So, I mean, so there's no, there wouldn't be any issue with banners?
For championships.
For championships. That's obviously not an advertisement, but of course, the fundraising banners are, of course, ads. That's what they're buying.
The town, I mean, so the one workaround is if the town claimed domain over those fields and said they're not part of the school department's oversight anymore. That could also take our language here.
I mean, Peter, are those fields even, I mean, I think an argument could be made that they're really not anyways. I mean, the town knows them.
The REC committee is on that base.
The REC committee pays to water them.
So it might be pretty easy to switch town.
I mean, when you do recess, you go this way.
Correct.
And, yeah, on, you know, Field Day, we're, you're out there, but you're not, are you regularly using those fields?
No.
Maybe for gym periodically?
Very periodically.
Right. So maybe we have...
You can answer the question. Town.
UMOs.
Town.
Town.
Yeah, I mean, that's take like all the upkeep, the buildings, the fields, the fences, all of that is done.
But ultimately, it's, it's not our decision.
But we can signal that we are willing to relinquish control...
Is there an electric meter?
...in collaboration with the REC department, to give control directly back to the town or the REC department, and then you'd be governed by your own policy. And then you'd be governed by your own policies, not by ours.
Do we want to do that?
That's our, the decision we have right now.
Well, so we've, historically, we've, you know, don't just be want about it. We've been resistant to wanting control of those fields.
We have resisted control.
Yeah, because we didn't want to maintain, so financial issues of maintaining the sprinkler systems and the, and all of that. So we, and we don't, we don't, from a school budget, do any of the maintenance or any of the repair to any of the, anything on that side of it.
It would cost us two teachers if we ever had to re-crown the field out there, literally.
Right.
Like, with X.
So. I'll be catching up with the town administrator later this week. Maybe I should can have a quick conversation with her about this. Because ultimately, it's the Selectmen that would need to.
But I would like to know by vote if this committee would like to move in the direction of trying to relinquish control over those fields back to the decision of the Select Board.
I mean, I kind of think we are.
I think everything is owned by the town.
It is.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, but I think, but making that distinction, I think, should take us out of the policy.
Protect us as the school department.
We'll draw a line at the, at the end of the parking lot.
Ultimately, what I'm trying to do is to protect the school, but also.
Because I don't want you getting encumbered with, with this. It's not really the intent. The intent is not to have big Coca-Cola signs all over the school building. I'm, I kind of think we already have, but I'm happy to make a motion that we reach out to the Board of Selectmen to clarify the control of the fields to the right of the building. That the, to clarify that the athletic fields are under the control of the town.
Okay. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we'll work with you to try and help make that something you can do.
All right, I'll go to the Selectmen and text. Thank you very much.
I'll catch up with the town administrator this week. And then as long as there aren't any concerns there, my guess is it would show up on the next, which would probably be in two weeks, the next Selectmen's meeting. And I would think it's a simple motion.
And I'll.
And again, I think it's really a clarification because in all intents and purposes, the town has complete control over those fields right now. Between Rec and Highway doing all the mowing and all of that, because none of it comes out of our budget.
Thank you. Yeah, awesome. Thank you for being here and thanks for bringing up those issues.
This is exciting.
Appreciate you.
Nice to have something different to talk about. Well, maybe not dogs, but.
All right, moving on to old business. So I just wanted to recap how FY '25 ended up working out because our last meeting was done remotely. It is available for the public to watch. It's on our website, but I don't believe it has been migrated over to YouTube where most people do go to watch our school committee meetings. So last year, very early on in the year, the administration alerted me that there was potentially a budget overrun. It was as quick as humanly possible. We moved to have a conversation about what was causing the overages. We convened a school committee meeting. We reached out to the town officials. We tried to get everyone on the same page at the same time with the best information we had at the time. I was very impressed with the communication that came from the administration to delineate where these dollars were being spent and how critical they were to the functioning of the school and to the individual rights of students receiving services. These numbers jumped around quite a bit as we went into the spring. Sometimes the number was approaching $350,000 of a budget deficit. We were trying to find every lever we could pull to try not to burden the town with having to fund it at special town meeting, including a joint effort with the Selectmen to utilize the Special Ed Reserve Fund, us being very creative about the rural aid grant that we are privy to here in Plimpton, and a variety of other spending freezes that the administration implemented. At the end of the year, we ended up not needing extra money at special town meeting. We ended up not needing the money from the Special Ed Reserve Fund. And we ended up not needing the majority of the rural aid fund as well. I believe our final number came out somewhere in the mid $30,000 range of a deficit, which we tried to also address with an earmark we had for some HVAC work here at the Denit. Trying to get the money from that earmark has been an interesting endeavor. I would like to thank personally Chief of Staff Chris Jean from Rep. Linatra's office, who is helping us work through the hurdles of bureaucracy at the State House to achieve those funds and for Kathy making phone calls to make sure that those dollars are delivered here for the jobs that were done on HVAC at the Denit last year. Hopefully, at the end of the day, the actual budget deficit, after we did extraordinary relief and realized those funds from the state came down to about $10,000 or so. A vastly different picture than we were afraid would be realized when we started talking about in the fall. I am still thrilled that we had that discussion in the fall, that we were alerted of the potential because I believe it gave us the time to mobilize all our best efforts and opportunities to fill in that hole and address the budget deficit. Hopefully, this year, we don't see so many ups and downs with the budget. I'm really hoping as Heather on boards is our Special Ed Director, she can work with Sarah to make sure that we're addressing any of the needs of our children and trying to anticipate the funds that might come in from the state so we can be a little bit more on target with where our budget might end up by the end of the year. It would be great if we could have one of those banner years where we send money back to the town. But my goal is to end at zero, if at all possible, and not end in a deficit again this year. Anybody have any follow-ups or questions about our FY '25 situation?
I would also just like to acknowledge that, you know, the staff here at the Denit underwent a budget freeze again. And so this is the second year in a row. And so thank you for all your efforts here to be able to, you know, trim at least a little bit here and a little bit there to help us get down to those numbers because, you know, as it was as we went into town meeting, we thought we had a lot bigger of a hole.
Yep.
And, you know, I'm much happier to end up on the other side of that, but, and certainly, you know, thank you to everyone for the work. And I would agree wholeheartedly with your comments about, you know, how quickly we were able to try and get a handle on it. It wasn't an easy thing because it kept trying to sneak away from us, so. But thoroughly appreciated.
And to that point, since we ended in a better position, this school committee did vote to approve two new aid positions in the building for this school year. And I hope that alleviates some of the stress that had been put on our staff and gives the students the exact things they need to be as successful as possible with their school year this year. So I appreciate that the school committee voted to do that. Peter, were you successful in hiring two new aides for the building?
Yes.
Awesome. So we allocate the funds, but obviously making sure it hits the road is Peter's job. So I'm glad to hear that the two new aides have been brought into the family and onboarded. Appreciate that.
Absolutely.
All right. So on to reports of standing committees. Anything under admin review?
Nope.
No? Okay. Policy will be having a meeting in two and a half weeks to discuss some changes to federal and state laws so we can be up to date and in compliance with those. Negotiations, I think we've heard the good news. We've ratified a contract tonight for the next three years. Union 31, do we have a joint meeting coming up or was it canceled? Someone on the calendar, but then I saw it not on the key.
I think the next one's in November.
Not until November?
Yeah.
So not for a while? Not until November. PAC, I believe we have a situation with PAC because Dan was our liaison to PAC. So that's something we're gonna have to think about. It's a rather large commitment. It's a school committee unto itself. I know John can't be on it because part of being on the Board of Directors of PAC is also being on their Retirement Trustee Committee. And he has a fiduciary responsibility to his job. Right. Well, I can't fix. So we're gonna have to just go through that and figure.
Good, yes. That's called retirement.
We do not need to get it right now. Something to keep in mind. Reach out to me if you have any questions about PAC. Have there been any meetings of the full regionalization committee?
Oh, yeah. So where we are is, we had a rather lengthy, so we're bouncing, we're going with Collins Center out of UMass. But we had sort of a little bit of a step back at our last meeting and then moving forward in that they had kind of revised the proposal in a way that didn't make too much sense from the standpoint that, you know, they had kind of taken out the financial piece of it, which is kind of the main piece, I think, that most people are interested in because it's really gonna come down to, I mean, we can come up with all sorts of great things that we could do if the world has, you know, the truck backs up with the cash and dumps it out in front of the building. It's not happening. So really, it comes down to, you know, what are, what benefits could you get out of full regionalization? And what are the costs going to be associated with that? And there seems to be an increasing realization among the committee members that maybe it's not gonna give as much cost savings as they thought. It doesn't mean that we still might not be some benefit to it, but we need to see the real numbers before anybody can make any real decisions about it. So we had a good long discussion with folks from the Collins Center and they were making, doing a revision of the proposal to make sure it was, it was more focused on what we need out of the total proposal. So I know we have a follow-up meeting on the calendar and hopefully we will have that and we'll start moving from that. But we're, I mean, we're at least a year out from getting the information that we would really need to digest, even with everything going sort of swinging on. There's a, there's a lot here to unpack. I mean, just, just as an example, right? I mean, it's like, okay, you get to look at each school district, each school and what they have for different levers. And so one of our levers is, is we get rural aid. Well, if we fully regionalize, the region isn't gonna qualify for rural aid, so that number goes away. So that's, you know, there's all these little pieces depending on the schools and things that need to be sort of thought through when you figure out that sort of financial piece of it, as well as coming out with clear understanding of what the benefits could be, you know, overall and what the detractors could be. And then when you get all that information, then we'll figure out what to do with that. But I will say the committee has been, it's been a good group of folks to really focus on getting the study done and getting the right information before anyone talks about anything else. And everyone seems to be fully in the boat rolling with yours in the same direction. So as much apprehensive as I was to do it, I think it's a worthwhile exercise for us to get the data so we can finally get the information that we need to be able to evaluate.
Awesome. Questions for John? Um, Peter, was there any big capital improvements or projects done at the Denit over the summer that you'd like to discuss or is it pretty standard maintenance and overhaul for summer?
It was a very standard summer, I'm happy to say. Mr. Walz and I are gonna sit down and go over some things that might have been discussed for some time now. You know, for the most part, it was a pretty straightforward summer.
Good to hear it and looking forward to seeing the list that you and Mike come up with so we can start planning out what we need to do to the building over the next several years.
Couple thoughts on that one. First, talking back about the earmark, based on the last, if I read the last set of emails correctly, it may be that even though we didn't have the full amount for the earmark, that we may be able to take certain expenses from this year and clean up the balance of that. So just keep that in mind and as that becomes clearer, we can, we can perhaps do that and thus perhaps offset a little bit of our budget. Because I think we would have had, depending on what, depending on what they granted us out of that, there may be anywhere from, you know, seven to 15,000 left in the earmarks. So we can use that to offset HVAC for this year.
And again, the earmark that John's talking about was from Senator Moran, who's no longer even a senator. And Rep. Linatra and her Chief of Staff, Chris Jean, not their earmark, had been working tirelessly over the summer to really make sure that we get the money and the funds delivered here at the Denit.
Apparently earmarks are orphaned children and they wander around and land in different places around the state government. And what was this in tourism?
Yes, the earmark was under the Department of Tourism, even though it's for HVAC for schools.
So they had their, they had their process, yeah, so, you know, I've long since given up trying to figure it out, but that's where it was. So that's the one thing. I think the other piece of it is that myself and multiple people have resigned from Town Properties Committee. So that committee is, well, it's not much there right now. So I do think when you do get that, when you guys put that list together, we should as a committee be a little more focused on items because we haven't done much around the building for the last couple of years because of the other tight budgets and the, and the loss of our, of our pool of extra funds that won't be there ever again because of how we, how we've properly rechanged how we account for things in the district. So we should take a look at that and we should start signaling early. So this is something that we should do this fall and come up with a list so we can start signaling early to the town about where we need, may need warrant articles to help deal with some capital improvement.
Excellent. So on to the legislative agenda. So I spent quite a bit of time at the State House over the summer, most of it testifying on bills that would be beneficial to public schools in Massachusetts. Two of the bills are familiar to this group. One was to increase the Special Ed Reserve Fund from 2% of net school spending up to 5% of net school spending. And we saw last year why having 5% saved for a rainy day would have been very beneficial to the situation. Again, I appreciate all of the committee members who have ever served on the Plimpton School Committee since I've been here because we've always, always tried to maximize that fund every year. So it's as robust as possible for, for when we potentially need it. So getting it up to 5% doesn't necessarily mean we'd be able to fund it up to 5% right away, but I know that this committee would work to maximize that fund as quickly as possible. Another one that I testified on was the Full Fund Rural Aid Bill. We actually had a setback in rural aid funding in FY '24. There was $15 million put into that from the state. FY '25, it was $15 million. For FY '26, the year we're currently working in, it was brought down to $12 million. So we actually saw backstep from the state in rural aid funding. Something we're gonna have to keep our eye on because if it keeps going that way, that's one of our only areas of reserve funds left that we can use as a lever when we run into situations mid-year through the budget. I do want to remind you all that the MAS-C, MAS-S Joint Conference down in Hyannis is happening in November on Wednesday, the 12th, Thursday, the 13th, Friday, the 14th, and Saturday, the 15th. If any of you would like to join me at that event, please let me know. You will be my guest. It will be no charge to the district or yourself. And Thursday and Friday's programming tend to be the best. If you want to take a look at what's going on, I believe they put out a preview guide of some of the speakers and some of the sessions that are gonna be happening. So please just reach out to me. I'll put you on the list as my guest. I'd love to have you down there. How about single signature warrants?
In your folder for tonight, you'd see that there was a warrant on June 30th for $60,573.01. There was also a warrant on August 25th for $230,649.85. The next warrant is on September 22nd. The single signature warrants, these documents will move into the consent agenda in the future.
Thank you, Sarah. Appreciate it. Moving on to CASA. Mr. Benito, any CASA news updates?
I could speak a little bit to that, Jason. I spoke with CASA this morning and they're looking to have their Harvest Fair here at school on September 27th from 10 to 2. They're hoping for an outside event. And being the planners that they are, they're already asking some questions about the Holiday Bazaar, which is mid-December, which doesn't seem quite possible that we're talking about that. But good, good planning goes a long way. So those were the two items that they had checked in with me about this this morning.
Okay, awesome. And do you have any updates for us?
I do. After what can feel like a very long and sometimes very short summer, it's great to have kids back in the building again. We're starting the year with 256 students. We had our open house for families Monday before school started. That was August 25th. We had an amazing turnout for families that came out to meet new teachers, who the classroom was going to look like, just kind of observed, this is the learning space. Much out, it's gonna be. to be in for the next 180 days. I'd be willing to say it was probably more of the, one of the best attended open houses we've had in a long time. We had our first fire drill the other day. We're starting with our PBIS lessons around the building so that students know what is an expected behavior in the lunchroom, at recess, in the hallway. Second year in our, got stuck with bathrooms. I'm not sure exactly how that happened, but they know what to do. We'll take care of all those things. We started DIBELS testing and STAR testing with all students this morning. Today was day three for our kindergarten students, which is always amazing to me. And already, just even after two days last week, today in the cafeteria, it was more orderly than I've seen at this point in the year. It was actually, students are doing quite well. I was thoroughly impressed with where they are, considering that last week they didn't know how to form a line. And now it's, if I want food, I'm getting in that line. And if I want to get rid of this, I'm going to that garbage can. It's amazing how quickly our K students adapt and learn. It's always fun. But like I said, it's a short and a long summer, but the purpose of we're all here is to serve our kids, and it's great to have them back in the building. So looking forward to a great year.
That's a great update. Thank you, Mr. Benito. Any questions for you?
How many kindergarteners did we end up with this year?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five. Well done. Thank you.
Great. Moving on to our Director of Finance and Operations, Sarah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to start by talking about the financial report, which I had put in your digital folders. If you took a look at that ahead of time, you can see that I have completed the chart of accounts conversion that I talked about last year. Along with that comes meaningful reports out of our financial system. In your folders, there were two reports, a summary report and a detailed report. To go back to part of the discussion about the FY '25 recap and the numbers jumping around, now that I have access to the reporting in the financial system, I am confident that we won't have that in the future, and I'm really excited about that. So in the future, these financial reports will be part of the consent agenda, but I will always answer questions on them as needed. Are there any questions about the financial reports tonight?
There's a number of items that have negatives already.
Yes.
We spent a little bit of time clicking off on a few of those. It looked like, was it English as a Second Language, and Denit Heat?
Can you tell me what?
Yeah, I'll come back up.
What?
Yep. So we have on page two.
ESY stands for Extended School Year.
Okay.
So part of what happened in the transition from our former special ed director to our current special ed director is when I had asked our former special ed director to budget the professional salaries, the support salaries, and the contracted services for Extended School Year, I was given one lump sum. And so the, all of the expenditures for Extended School Year, the money was put in one place under professional salaries, but it was spent out appropriately from where it was supposed to. That's the first thing about Extended School Year. The second thing about Extended School Year is Halifax and Plington both send students to the Denit Elementary School for Extended School Year. So one of the things that will be happening over the next month or so is the special ed bookkeeper will be calculating out the number of students from Halifax, the number of students from Plington, and then Plington will bill Halifax for their share of the cost of running the Extended School Year.
If you recall, that was one of the levers we had last year, was some of the revenue from the Extended School Year.
So I'm looking at negative numbers, but that should all come out in the wash, is basically the point of that, because the money's budgeted in one line, and therefore it's not showing up in the others. And still, there's going to be funds coming back in as the adjustment.
Yes.
Any other questions for Sarah?
I do. I just have to get to, there's a lot of numbers.
Take your time.
Page five, down towards the bottom, DES heat. And we're showing a $10,200 deficit.
So the, obviously, we haven't paid for heat for the year yet. The bookkeeper that does the accounts payable for Halifax, Kingston, and Plington went in and put a projection for heat for the year. So that money hasn't been spent, that's just been set aside. I can have her go back and adjust it.
I mean, as long as it's not negative yet.
It's not.
Then that's fine.
More of a placeholder?
Yeah, so there's an.
Not just a placeholder, but an incorrect one.
Okay.
But I can have her fix it if you'd like.
Yep, for the next meeting, it's fine.
Okay. Any other questions for Sarah?
And I assume when we do this is the, oh, there's also, it looks like an additional tuition to collaboratives at the end. Showing up, it looks like there's extra 23.
Two sheen dollars.
Yeah, collaboratives, last item.
So on that one, the collaborative tuitions were being paid for out of circuit breaker and out of operating budget. I can check with the special ed bookkeeper and make sure we're allocating the tuitions to the correct place.
Okay, great. I'm done. Good questions, good answers. Any further questions? Seeing none, can I have a motion to accept Sarah's report as presented?
I'm moved.
Okay, so moved by John. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Rob. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. It's unanimous. Thank you. Bill grants, donations, and awards, Sarah.
So Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A says that grants and gifts given for educational purposes can be spent by the district if they are approved by school committee. So this, in your school committee packet, was a summary of what has been received by the district up to this date. So so far, there's one, two, three, four, five things on your list totaling $179,664. They are the PRISM grant, which Dr. Clifford will talk about in her portion of the meeting, donation, and then the Title I, II, and IV grants. So the entitlement grants, that's what has been received so far.
Do I have a motion to accept and approve the grant's usage?
See, I don't let you do it anymore. Carl's gonna let you do it.
So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you very much, Sarah. So moving on to Dr. Clifford. I can't wait to hear about that PRISM grant, but.
I'm gonna save that for last.
I don't blame you at all.
I'm gonna save the best for last.
I don't blame you at all.
So I have a few things tonight. One is professional development this summer. There were three courses offered to teachers and administrators over the summer for research for better teaching. One was a studying skillful teacher, which we offer generally every year, analyzing teaching for student results, which is for evaluators, for administrators. And the other one was high expectations teaching. That course really builds on the studying skillful teacher class, so it's almost like the next class that you might take after studying skillful teacher. So those were some classes that were offered this summer to teachers and administrators. We had the new teacher orientation on August 20th at the high school. And then we had a retreat. We had a leadership retreat on the 25th of June, and the 26th, and the 19th of August. And we talked about data-wise, reviewing benchmark data, strategy for district improvement, instructional leadership, the MTSS process, and edge a climber. Then we also just had some recent professional development days, August 25th and the 26th, and September 2nd. The 25th, we met, all met at the high school, where Dr. Prue and Dr. Tucker both spoke. People went back to their schools. They participated in mandatory training. They worked on setting up their classrooms and meeting in teams. And on the 26th, we had math on professional development for really K through eight teachers. And then at the high school level, they met in departments. We had some PD on AI for the middle school and high school teachers, which was really well received. And then again, on September 2nd, we continued with more professional development for our new math program, HMH. So those were three very full days, a lot done. And the other piece, which Sarah just spoke about with the title grants, titled I, II, and IV from Plington, that were submitted and have been approved. So we're happy about that. That's some great funding for us. And the last piece is the PRISM grant. So PRISM stands for Partnership for Reading Success in Massachusetts. It's a grant program designed to improve literacy outcomes in Massachusetts schools, both PRISM II, which is pre-K through three, and PRISM III, four through 12 components. It's part of the larger literacy launch initiative, which you may have heard of Governor Haley speaking about. It's focused on providing high-quality, evidence-based reading instruction to all students. PRISM grants help districts evaluate, select, and implement high-quality instructional materials, along with providing professional development and coaching support. So in the spring, I applied for pre-K through three, so PRISM II, for all, for Silver Lake, Halifax, Plington, and for Kingston. And I also applied for PRISM III, which would be for grades four through 12, for all the districts and for Silver Lake. We got PRISM II in Plington, Kingston, and Silver Lake preschool. And for Plington, it's $133,000. So it's a big, big amount of money that we got. I'm really excited about it, because what this will do is it helps us pay stipends to teachers to work beyond the contractual time, to be on a committee, to actually be the folks who look at the curriculum and review it and pilot it. And really, it pays for them to be part of that process. It also pays for us to have a consultant who is funded by DESI. It's called TNTP. It's called a new teacher project. So we'll be having consultants work with us and coaches work with us. And the last piece is it will pay for half of the new English Language Act program for us. So it really comes in in three different ways, so I'm really excited about that. And that information, basically, the call for teachers to be a part of that went out Friday, so I'm hoping that we'll get a good group together and do some of that work. And there's potential for it to lead on into next year for us to get more help in the implementation of that.
It's beyond great. Like, we know as a state that our students score the highest in the nation on reading, but those scores, even in Massachusetts, have in the past few years been steadily drifting downwards, right? And we go through over the data that Peter shares with us, and we can see some struggles in the areas of reading. Dr. Clifford came on board, collaborated with the Hill for Literacy, really started digging into the science of reading with the state initiative, putting dollars behind it. But you had to reach out and grab them, which I'm very proud of our administrative team for reaching out and grabbing those funds. I know you didn't get all of the funds you went after, but $133,000 to Plington is over 3.5% of our annual budget. That is a tremendous win. And to know the focus is going to be on those early readers, the most critical point in determining this future success of students, that we're going to have an opportunity to do that here is incredible. And for people who are intimidated by this idea of the science of reading, I just want to demystify it a little bit for you. A lot of it goes back to basic phonics, decoding, making sure children can understand the words in front of them. But it's all based on whether or not research has proven techniques are actually going to have outcomes for students. A lot of the techniques are things some of our teachers are already doing here at Denit. It will just reaffirm what they're doing and strengthen their repertoire of skills that they can use to help bring our readers further along than they would without something that is research-based. So this is absolutely incredible. To be able to say that we're going to have teachers involved, that it's going to help us with our testing, and potentially help fund half of the curriculum adoption cycle is phenomenal. It's a great win. I just want to applaud you and the administrative team for doing this work. Thank you. Go ahead.
Can I ask you a couple of questions?
Please.
So that only applies for K to three? How is it, how can we, how is it possible to only apply those funds for K to three?
Right.
And not just use it Denit-wide, which I'm okay with, but just curious how that would, and that's one of three questions.
Yep. So that's a really good question. And when I met with the State Department of Ed folks when we got this grant, and the TNTP folks, that was part of our discussion. So it will include K through six. The piece that I needed to account for was how would I pay for stipends that weren't part of PRISM, so teachers could be a part of that. And I included that in my title grants when I wrote those, so that I could bring on people that weren't necessarily K through three, but that teachers could be a part of that. And they were okay, both the state and TNTP, understanding that we are a K through six school, and that people that weren't in grades four, five, six would be part of this work. They understood that, and they want that consistency. They want that alignment to happen K through six. And our seven through 12 group is going to be working with Hill for Literacy. I've already had joint meetings with both consulting groups to make sure that there's a consistency, but that's a really good question that.
So we get to use that one.
Yeah.
Okay. Second question was for, last year, we had, we did have a fair amount of communication about, conversations about the reading scores, but there's also a bunch about the math scores.
Yeah.
And you were going to be, we were going to be implementing a new math curriculum.
Yeah.
You touched on it super briefly there. Just curious how that implementation went, and when do we call it complete?
Yeah.
And when do you think that we're going to be seeing some turnaround effect from that?
So we, so we had three days before school began. Two of those days were totally devoted to HMH, which is the new math program, professional development. So we've already started a lot of that work. There will be coaching cycles that will be happening throughout the year. There will be people from the publisher that will be coming in and doing coaching. So all of that implementation work continues now. We'll circle back to in February for another professional development day to work on that. So it's being implemented now, and my hope is that, you know, we'll see results in spring of '26, but with the caveat that implementing a program with fidelity is really a tall, is a tall order. It's very time-consuming for teachers. It's like learning a whole new thing, you know? So I'm really happy and pleased with, you know, the level of commitment that I've seen within the districts around this program. It's a lot. And we want people to implement it with fidelity, the way that it's written, the way that it's done, knowing that the first year is going to take a lot of effort and a lot of time. So of course, we want improved, you know, outcomes. And I know we will, but I just want to make, I want to acknowledge that it's a lot of, a lot of blood, sweat, and tears from the teachers, which I'm really thankful for. But that's ongoing. And I can update you, I can update you as we go on with more information about that.
That sort of leads me to my third question.
So yeah, it's a lot of work for the teachers to be learning a new curriculum and instituting a new curriculum. But if I remember correctly, this new program has quite a bit more small group work also. So with this new grant and the better situation that we're in financially as far as the budget's concerned, is there any room to have the communication tick back up for bringing back on the math intervention list that we had a few years back?
So since that's a budgetary question, I'll answer that question for you. Not right now.
Okay.
Okay. We just ratified a new contract, right? The contract is a 333, but acknowledging that with steps and lanes, it actually costs us a little bit more, okay? Where rural aid has been cut, we don't know what that's going to look like next year. We already committed to using everything that we thought we were getting from rural aid for the operating budget for this year, plus we have to make up the difference of the percentage we lost. So the flexibility there isn't as flexible as it may seem. We still need to be very cautious. We've had one financial report so far, and again, I don't know where we're going to end up as we start heading into the budget cycle this year, of what inflationary pressures we continue to feel, whether or not the state is actually going to fulfill its promise to address the inflationary. to address the inflationary misses they've had on our Chapter 70 funding for the past four years now, right? I do not want to put ourselves in that financial situation where we overextend now and have to cut people. That's my biggest concern, to be absolutely honest with you, is if we go too aggressive with finances right now, we're going to end up hurting a lot of people later on when we have to cut staff from the building. And that is my last resort of dealing with the financial situation.
That's fair. I just want to keep my eye on it, that's all.
Yep.
I know we want to be physically responsible.
I would love to see the math interventionist position filled and brought back, but at this point, I think it would be irresponsible of the committee to do so.
That's fair. We'll bring it back up again later.
Yeah. I agree with Jason, keep reminding us, but we're also watching too. We would like that. We also would like to restore some of the aids that have, you know, we did add two aids, but those were targeted. It would be great to be able to add some of that back. But if we overextend, that cost isn't just for, you know, this year, and you have to slice them off, then you haven't, you don't get all that money back because you have to pay out the unemployment, and so there's a drag. And so we just don't want to get to that. That's not a, so we're, we're a little bit in the wait and see, and see how the budget goes and make sure that everything lines up.
And theoretically, we're already overextended. Because we paid for those two new aids from one-time funds, grants, right? If they sunset on us, we're going to have to figure out a way to wrap them into the operational budget or to lose an equal amount of dollars from the budget, which you already know how close to the bone we are in many areas. And we don't want to have to resort for another year and the budget freezes.
And we, you know, we do know that in making those decisions to add the aids was a very targeted decision, one, to support the children, but also to make sure that they could, or do the best we can to keep them in the building.
Sure.
Because it's, it may cost us more money, but it's still cheaper to always keep them in the building.
And I think the third would also be to make sure that we prevent burnout to the largest extent possible of our current staff, bringing on those extra bodies and people who can do in the building when needed. So awesome win. Thank you so much to everybody who is involved. Awesome news. Thank you. So Dr. Prue.
Sure. So in your packet tonight, you'll find the updated strategy for district improvement. And as Dr. Clifford had mentioned, over the summer, we have what we call a leadership retreat, which is really a misnomer. It's a lot of work. And our administrators from across our various districts, principals, coordinators, assistant principals, central office staff, come together to examine what we have accomplished in the past year and what we need to look in terms of forward for the upcoming school year. And we commit ourselves to a number of different areas. Sometimes we also need to think about what is actually feasible within a school year, and then we come together and we debate and discuss what stays and what goes and those kinds of things. So that's one of the things that we do during the administrative retreat. If you look at the strategic objectives, they have remained the same. And for each of the strategic objectives, there are new items for this year. I will focus only on those that really pertain to Denit Elementary School or elementary schools in general. But one is that we are expanding our anti-bullying and post-social supports by partnering with changemakers for good. This is a community presentation for parents and caregivers. It's going to be on September 29th in the evening, and we will have representatives from all of our schools there, but we strongly encourage parents from all of our schools to attend in helping us to combat hate and bullying in our schools. So that will be the focus for September 29th. We are working on consistently using the shared district calendar so that we don't have events in multiple schools and multiple grade levels that conflict if we can at all help it. So we don't want some of the bigger events and issues to be overlapping. And so we continually work on that and try to find the best placement of different events to try to make sure that we're not creating undue burdens for our parents. We're going to expand participation in the second annual district-wide community curriculum showcase, which was held at the high school last year. And we've asked all of our principals to make sure that they fulfill the community member requirement on their school council by October. So those are all the ways that in the elementary school, we're looking to build our relationships and communicate more effectively for the upcoming school year, district-wide. In terms of emphasizing high expectations, we are looking at strengthening our co-teaching methodology. We're going to be utilizing our observation and the teacher evaluation system to provide teachers with feedback on research-based effective strategies from Research for Better Teaching. We're specifically going to be focusing on framing the lesson, communicating the objective, and implementing criteria for success so students know what it is that they need to do in order to be successful. Students can articulate what they're learning and why. And the activation of knowledge as well as helping students to engage with the materials in ways that are effective in a, in language and in expectations that have been shared with all of our teachers, because within our first three years, some of you may not realize this, all teachers are required to take the Research for Better Teaching course. And this has been the case for many years now. So it's common language, and so these are the types of things that we'll be looking at and providing feedback for. We're going to continue full staff training on the utilization of EduClima. This is the system that we have used to look at our benchmark data, our MCAS data, our attendance data. It can, it can combine all of our data into not only district-wide, but also school, grade, even classroom. So one of the things we've struggled with for many years was that when we went to look at data, particularly with MCAS, we had to look at each school separately, which isn't a bad thing. But when it came to looking at trends longitudinally or even as a district, it became next to impossible and unbearable in terms of the burden that it created. It wasn't easy to use for us. And so this system does help us to look at that data in, not only at the classroom level, but at the district level as well. So we're grateful for that. And we're using the DataWise process at each school to inform our data meetings and our data teams. So we went over some training on that this summer, and we'll be continuing to look at those protocols throughout the school year. In terms of creating and implementing an aligned and engaging curriculum, math is in year two. We are implementing the new math programs, K through 10. ELA is in year one. Dr. Clifford has, is beginning to assemble an ELA curriculum steering committee in implementing the district literacy plan. And for science in particular, we're going to be implementing all of the units in grade six at Denit Elementary School, in all of our elementary schools. We will continue to implement assessments, whether they be Common Assessments, STAR, DIBELS, three times a year to report on student progress. And in terms of improving structures and processes, we are working with the tri-town committee to examine full regionalization, the pros, or I should say, the costs and benefits of full regionalization, and we are partnering with the Collins Center, as we discussed earlier this evening. Professional development incorporating AI into instruction. We have begun some of that professional development already with secondary schools. And we are going to present to you tonight a streamlined timeline for the FY27 capital and budget planning to fund district-wide needs. And Sarah is going to begin working on a revised chart of account for revolving and grants this year. So Sarah has done a lot of work, a lot of work, to build and put information in her team into a system that will allow us to use actual software to track our budget, which for many years, we had the software, but it wasn't being used or utilized fully in a way that was essential, important.
Modern best practice and compliance with state regulations.
Yes. So it has taken her a lot of time and effort to, to set this up, and I think we're all going to begin, thankfully, for her, for her efforts in particular, we're going to begin to reap the benefits of being able to have more real-time data. For years, we were existing off of Google Spreadsheets, and it just wasn't an appropriate way to look at an institution of this much money and size.
It's a big company.
Yes, it is. So, you know, the, I, no, no slides. I mean, I'm impressed by what people were able to do with Google Spreadsheets, but comes a time where you need to consolidate that information, you need to be able to access it more readily. It's already also paying off in terms of the data that we're able to get with personnel as well, but that was the phase one where we integrated all of our personnel information.
But I think we're already seeing it tonight, looking through the budget.
Yes.
In that things are jumping out that could have been buried in a UDA somewhere until all of a sudden it shows up three months later, and we're like, where did this come from? And then you have to chase down as to what's going on, whereas this, it's very quickly you're able to see where it is and how we need to update that so that we keep things tighter. I think it's great.
So it's been a huge source of relief for me and for Sarah as we see more of those accounts being straightened out and fixed. We'll feel even better after revolving and grants are done, but as you can imagine, it has been a big lift for her in particular. So I just wanted to thank her publicly as well.
And I think it's really important, and it's not just for the school committee, but for all of the departments in town, that we highlight grants. And to be able to press a button and say at any point in time, this is what we brought in that was above and beyond what was budgeted. Because I don't think that the town residents have full, the taxpayers have a full understanding of how much hard work is done in the school to be able to get funds, up at the State House to be able to, you know, push on that, and also, you know, for just all the grant writing that's being done by schools and other departments in town. I mean, our tax bill would be a lot greater to be able to do what we do without the grants. So I think that's great, and to be able to see that today and be able to feature PRISM II is very positive.
It's exciting. So then, and the second item in your packet tonight is the proposed budget development schedule. In August, we started communicating regarding the budget to principals, the director of student services, director of technology, director of facilities and coordinators. They also, all of their line items are now available because of all of the work that Sarah has done over the summer to make it available this early, earlier than ever before. In September, we were asking you to begin the budget discussion in terms of what it is, what your goals and priorities are going to be so that it can help inform us. In November, we hold our joint meeting where we hear from our director of student services, we hear from technology, we hear from our curriculum coordinator. They give us an overview. And by December, our goal is to have a preliminary budget that hopefully will be, in theory, Recognizing that, as a school system, we have all sorts of unknowns that are going to potentially have an impact, particularly on our Silver Lake budget, which ultimately also impacts Plimpton. So if we, we will probably emphasize more so in Silver Lake than here, some of the things that are subject to change, it's important for people to realize that those items are not something that we can necessarily estimate with certainty and, or couldn't change drastically based upon any number of things. So while we give you a preliminary budget, recognize that it will and can change.
Yeah. I mean, just the title funding, which we've always taken for granted, because title funding from the federal government really is about trying to address economically disadvantaged learners, people who've chronically underperformed in schools, try to get professional development for teachers, address English language learners. Just this summer, I had to participate in two lawsuits against the federal government to make sure those funds were received by the states. And even with the federal government saying they would release those funds, there's been delays in those funds showing up in Massachusetts and thus delays for them showing up in the school districts as well. So we are dealing with a lot of unknowns, but if we can give the town an idea of where we think we might be coming from, what kind of funding we might need from them, you know, they can have a little bit more lead time in figuring out the rest of their budgets. And hopefully, as time goes on and we get further into the winter and spring, we'll know more from the federal government and state budget of where things will pan out. So I think it's a pretty aggressive timeline. I totally see why you're trying to put it together for the towns and why they would want it, but it is definitely warranted to caution. The amount of funding that our schools receive from these federal and state grants and budgets is quite substantial. I mean, here at the Denit, we're over $1 million in state funding in a $4 million budget. It's 25% of our budget right there. Plus all these grants, which I know they seem like extra money, most of the grants that we get in year in and year out, we've been getting year in and year out, so we're actually dependent on that money right now. The PRISM, we got net new, but we had some big things we haven't been able to do the past couple of years that this is going to allow us to do. So it's not just how much we think we're going to need to make the school function next year, it's how much is the town going to have to help support that and where are the other sources of funding going to be coming from, which we don't have any control over as a school department. I would say as a baseline for the budget for next year, that we try and include the two aids that we added as part of a level-funded budget, right? Because that is what we're operating with this year. I want that to be included and level-funded. From there, I'm open to any of the school committees' ideas of where we might want to go with it. Obviously, we should explore what it would look like to add back in a math interventionist as an addition to a level service budget. But I would take most of my direction from your people, Jill, and what they think are in the best interest of the students in Denit, and how we should prioritize any additional funds we may be able to get above level-funded for next fiscal year. Anybody else?
Yeah, so a couple of thoughts. One, just to level set with folks watching this meeting, because there was nothing else on Netflix to watch, but, you know, the school's budget represent just over 50% of the town's budget. And so, Jill, I really commend you for, I mean, I understand, it's preliminary, it's better than a swag, but it's not set in stone. But it's really, really important because, you know, we worked very closely with the town, and they had it at sort of front of mind about what was happening with our budget this past year. And that became integral to their planning process. So having an early, as early as possible, you know, the warrant wasn't that long this year. There's a reason for that, because it was like, this is not the year for anything extra, because we need to be able to get through with a balanced budget. So it's important to be able to telegraph that as early as we can. And then, you know, I do look forward to a fresh look at our special ed programs, because the only place that we have any opportunity to make, you know, any improvements is there. Again, with the focus on getting our students what they need, but any places where we can, where we can look to have kids stay under our roof, or at least within our district is, it's, people are getting tired of hearing me say that, but it's one of my things that everyone's.
I do not.
So, good. So we will have lots of discussions about that. But it, no, I think it's really important, and, you know, it's the place where, one, we can do better for our students, and two, where we have the opportunity, at least for some savings. So, you know, I know you're brand new to it, and there's a lot of drawers to look in, but I'm glad to have you here and look forward to that because that, you know, that's the letter, you know, because it's, we're not going to, we're not getting extra funding from the federal government anytime soon.
No, but we're still working on the state.
And the state is?
We're still working on the state. There's potential that we might get some supplemental budget. Governor Healy said that the budget was tight this year. Education barely got level-funded. But she's filed two supplemental budgets since then of over $1 billion. None of it went to education. So we're knocking on her door saying, like, where did this billion come from? So we're knocking on her door saying like, where did this billion come from? Are you going to send some our way? So we are actively pursuing a supplemental budget right now to try and adjust the inflation index for Chapter 70 to increase circuit breaker funding and a variety of other things, including fully funding the rural aid package up to the $60 million. Instead of even just asking for the 15, we're going all the way to the 60. So multiple different groups pushing for that. MTA is pushing for it. MASC is pushing for it. I know the superintendents would love some extra money for our school districts instead of trying to fight for an override year after year. So we are putting up the fight for every single dollar we can get back to our towns, for our kids, for the education.
And the only other thing I would highlight just for general knowledge for folks, I saw an article the other week about the various slew of ballot initiatives that got, that got deemed not unconstitutional. Doesn't mean they should be, but there's some in there that are going to be, I think, very problematic from a revenue perspective to the state. So just folks, keep an eye out for what, what comes and what actually gets the level of signatures necessary to be on a ballot. But there's some things that are a little bit shocking on that, so.
Any further business before the committee this evening? I apologize for the length. This first meeting of the year usually is a rather long one. We haven't seen each other and there's a lot of business to discuss. But I think the real big takeaway tonight is, you know, we came to an agreement with our teachers for a three-year contract. I appreciate that. The administrative team put together some excellent work to get us that grant funded here in Plington. And I appreciate Mr. Veneto and his entire team getting this building ready for the kids to have an awesome school year at the Denit. Great memories are made in this building every single year. And it's because of the efforts of the people who work in the Denit every single day. Just some dates to remember, we have two early days coming up. Remember early days now and at 12:30 so kids can eat lunch here. We have one on September 25th and we have one on October 23rd. First long weekend for any of us is going to be October 13th for Columbus Day. And the next school committee meeting is on October 27th. I just want to remind the viewing audience that if anyone is interested in interviewing for the vacancy on the school committee, that we will be holding interviews on October 27th at 5:00 PM. Point of contact is me, Jason Fraser. You can find my email on the Denit webpage and the Silver Lake webpage. I'm happy to answer questions or set up a time for your interview in front of the committee to make your case for joining us in this important work. Seeing no further business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved by Brian. You got a second? Second by Rob. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.
You too.